Okay, we are on record.
Okay, and I want to call the meeting to order for law of rise and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
All right, everyone have a seat. Roll call Suzanne, please.
Okay, member Cohen.
Present.
Member Toss.
Present.
Member Hawk.
Here.
Ad hoc member Whipple.
Here.
Uh, ad hoc member Shandeleman, I don't think he's here. Member Phillip. And Chairman Cornelius.
I am here. Um, since our short one, should we make Doug a voting member tonight?
Uh, sure, if you'd like to.
Is that okay with Doug? Doug, you okay with that?
Yes.
Right.
And Russell Hawk second that.
All in favor?
Aye. The board had a vote on that. I thought that was chairman's discretion.
And we'll vote. What the heck? It's in the minutes. Our lawyer's not here. Fine. I'm the lawyer. Vote. Let's go.
All right, I apologize. I forgot to send the minutes when I finished them, so I don't know if you all saw them when I emailed.
Yeah, I don't know if you had a chance and read the minutes.
Yeah, they're there and they're on the website, but I didn't. I don't know if you got to see them.
A chance, we can delay till next month.
I don't know if that's wise because there might be some changes. There are a few people who are up their appointments and we have somebody else. I'm not sure how long he'll be here. He's going to Better Pastures.
So wait a minute or two and look at the minutes.
Maybe delayed a little bit. I may be here.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's good. That's even better.
I had a look at them.
Well, then.
Yeah, any concerns, Russ?
I did not.
I didn't either. They look pretty good to me.
Okay, so I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 25 February 2021.
I'll second.
Thank you, Russ. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, first thing is a continued public hearing. No.
Yes, it's well, it's a requesting in a German. It's supposed to be a continuing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Request a German for 2A2 Route 59 LLC. The problem is the DOP or Department of Transportation has not reviewed the plan yet.
Now, they asked for changes from the last meeting and they have yet to review and they sent an email today. I don't know if you all saw it, forwarded it. So he unfortunately is stuck until they approve it. So I need him a second.
I'll second.
And this is for what meeting? It's next month, I assume?
He's requesting to go to the April 22nd meeting at 7:30. He's hoping he'll have comments by.
I assume unless we are told, we can meet in person.
Correct.
That is what Joe is seconding.
Correct.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, motion carried. Next thing is the, why have the right, what's the right agenda?
Okay.
Send it out.
Public hearing for 14 Woodland Place.
Yes. Okay, that's it.
Good evening, Terry Rice for the applicant. Um, board has reviewed this a number of meetings. The applicant has throughout the process been very cooperative and amended the plans. Whenever the board has requested changes to be made, I think all of the outstanding legal issues have been resolved. There've been changes made as of 4th in my letter of March 11th to comply with what the board had requested. Um, I'm sure we'll go through them, but the consultants have only minor uh, items at this point in time and um, frankly, think it's about time for an approval. So we'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Valerie, you want to cover your uh, comments quickly? I know there doesn't seem to be a lot, but.
No, I think my comments really circle back on the lighting plan. We're almost there.
Uh, yeah, I hope so.
So uh, we just identified that there is one pole, pole 5C, which is 15 feet and that exceeds the maximum height of 12 feet. So we're asking that to be reduced. Um, we are also noting that um, the lumens, as well as the overall intensity of the lighting fixtures in the parking area also have been reduced to meet the requirements. And uh, we also wanted to, for the planning board to consider um, requiring the applicant to place lighting on timers and/or motion detectors. Um, as well as discuss with the applicant, the hours in the evening um, that the lights will be on. And that those be noted on the plan.
So that's fine. The height of that one pole, I don't think there's any problem reducing that. That can certainly be a condition of approval. Um, as the applicant has said on a number of occasions, they don't want to have lights on any more than they have to. So that's really not an issue with the limiting the the hours of the lighting.
Yeah, we actually, um, there was just a misunderstanding between us and and our and our surveyor and he just, he just left it out from the plan. We actually gave it to him and he just left it out. Didn't even realize until you pointed it out that it was left out. But basically, we're going to keep it on from sundown on Friday and Saturday until 10:00 PM. And on Jewish holidays, but we could add it, add that note.
Okay.
That would be good to add the note. So sundown Friday, all Friday night into Saturday, right?
No, Friday or Saturday night.
Friday, Friday and Saturday from sundown to 10:00 PM.
10:00 PM.
And then on Jewish holidays.
Yeah. Okay.
So they'll be on the timer then?
It will, yeah.
Okay, super.
Hopefully the timer is smart enough to know the time. I used to have those. Now I don't, my lights are not that smart, so. No one sundown is. All right?
Yep.
Anything else Valerie? You're good.
That's it.
All right, and Eve, did you have any comments?
Uh, yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one minor comment about the grading. We like when when a person is putting in a driveway, we like to see the pitch for the first 10 feet come up from the road and this is to protect the property from having road runoff go down onto their property. So that's a quite easy fix. They just have to grade it a little bit. I did notice stormwater maintenance agreement will be required, which is typical for this type of application. And I just reiterated some of Valerie's concerns about the lighting and the ability to shield it and to uh, set them on timers. So I think everything is essentially done, just one minor change.
Okay, thank you, Eve.
And if I'm, I think all of those things that have been discussed tonight are minor, it can be conditions of an approval.
I would agree.
So to be clear on lighting, light will not exceed the property boundaries way it will be set up and it will not be on other days of the week except for Friday and Saturday and Jewish holiday.
Correct.
And uh, may I ask on the holidays, do they also go off at 10:00 PM or on holidays, might they stay on later?
They will.
10:00 PM is the cutoff. That'd be great. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board members?
No comments, John. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to open this for public comment.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Okay. If if anybody would like to speak, if you could either um, say it in the chat or if I can see you raise your hand. I know Danielle Meehan mentioned, so I'm going to unmute you.
Actually Suzanne, um, I'm not ready right now, but thank you. I'm sorry.
I didn't know which application when I saw your email. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, if anybody would like to comment, if they could please um, put it in the chat. So, because a lot of people, I don't see them. And I'm getting Scott Yugel on for the next application since we're towards the end of this.
I don't see anyone in the chat Suzanne.
No, I don't either. So no comments from the public for the record.
All right, um, I assume the planning board is ready to vote on the application? No other comments, concerns?
No, no, make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so.
Um, should I just do a quick roll call of the vote and if they had any comments? Or you just.
We have to have the motion first.
I'm not going to make the motion right now.
That's what he, okay. I was typing to Scott. I apologize.
That's okay. So I'll make the, uh, I'll make a motion to approve uh, the application for 14 Woodland Place for a proposed residential place of worship subject to the lighting and grading that was discussed in the meeting before. And once that is done, they'll be fine.
Um, thank you. I appreciate that most. Need to do a neg deck first?
Oh, we got to Seeker?
No, this was a type 2 action.
I'll make a motion to make uh, the planning board delete agency for.
No, 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 no. So this was a take two action. So this does not qualify for seeker. Right. It is assumed that there will be no significant adverse impact associated with this project.
And I'll make a motion to classify this application as an unlisted and no further.
No. Mr. Chairman, you don't have to classify it as anything. It automatically falls under a type 2 action under seeker. So it doesn't require any classification or any additional um, motions from this board um, pertaining to seeker.
Essentially.
No.
You're done. Yeah, just the approval. We're good. Nothing more.
Never trust a lawyer. All right. I'll go back to my original with the application subject to the lighting and the grading that was discussed in the meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Russ. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, you want to do this individually Suzanne?
Um, if you have any comments, if you don't have comments, then I don't need to.
I don't think anyone has any comments. I think we commented a lot about this application.
Okay, so everyone's all in favor? Five, zero, correct?
Yep. Motion carried.
Thank you very much, folks.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you, Bela and Solomon.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you all.
I'll be in touch. You do have to go to a final CDRC with the final plans for chairman's endorsement. That's the last part of the process.
All right.
Okay, and I'll touch you. I know for your holiday tomorrow, okay?
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, have a good Passover.
Yeah, happy. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go to number?
11.
Uh, 10 or 11 on the agenda? I lost my agenda. We're skipping around. So um, we're going to go discuss the letter from Young and Summer.
Yes, I wanted to just talk to the board a little bit about this. So at the last meeting, there was a discussion um, from the board to hire a consultant to review the application, especially with concerns with public safety as well as you know, the overall application itself. And so Eve and I both, um, you know, we both looked internally in our own firms as well as externally. And we were not able to find somebody because it's very, it's a new field and it's a specialty field. And in that course of time, I did receive a phone call from the attorney representing the applicant. And they asked if we found somebody to review the application. And at that point, I mentioned that we have not. So they requested that they would, um, they suggested that they would send you a letter identifying some potential firms that could, that are involved in this field that could review this particular application but have no association with this application at all. And so those are the two firms that have been submitted to us. And then I'm bringing this to the board to see if you would like me to reach out to one or one or both of those firms to see if they would be able to take on this work and review the application for the village.
Sounds like a plan to me.
Yeah, I think it kind of makes sense. I mean, there's two of them and like you said, it might be kind of hard to find other ones doing it. I guess the thing is, what would be the right questions to ask about? See if which one would be more qualified.
I think Scott is, Scott, are you speaking?
Yeah, Scott, you gotta unmute. I've been unmuting you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. I was jumping in saying I thought it was a very good idea that we do it that way. And I think uh, the one, so your question was, what would we ask them? Well, we'd ask them to have, you had experience in the past with these types of projects and the, this type of battery uh, um, you know, uh, formation and uh, ask them to tell us about other projects they've worked on or articles they've written. The same thing, I would ask someone if I was prepping them as an expert, for example, for trial or some such thing, their background and things. And then from there, you will be able to gauge if either of them really have any real experience at all, that might be worth it. Or is it just as we often call it, um, them just trying to bolster their position by having a friendly expert in their industry who wants to help them because they would do the same for them and nothing wrong with that, except it would not be to our benefit and therefore I would want, I wouldn't want that.
We may also want to determine if there's a way they can look at our village and see if there's a better spot to put this.
Well, I can, I'll, I'll tell you, there is a better, there's got to be better spots. That's not a good spot for this, for this look.
Yeah, I happen to agree, but one hour kind of indicated that needed to be there to provide the surge power needed, but I'm wondering the way, what difference does it make? So.
To me, that sounds like just a nice marketing sales statement, self-serving marketing sales statement. And they mentioned, and I'm not making, you know, I don't mean to be disrespectful at all, but I'm the advocate for the village, not for them. It also sounded to me like they're giving us some gobbledygook, hoodwinked nonsense about, well, this is a great spot. These were, it's the most efficient spot. I don't care about efficiency. I'm with the Public Service Commission. I represent this, the health and safety and welfare of the village residents. So whatever they said, whatever their reasons were, to me, didn't really have any real strength behind them.
Okay.
Are we allowed to speak? I didn't know if this is the ability for the applicant to respond at all?
Um, can you just identify yourself, please?
Yeah, sure. It's Rob Panashi, P-A-N-A-S-C-I. Um, attorney with Young Summer.
Okay, thank you.
The applicant. Um, call these two consultants, find they're fire safety experts, but if you don't want to believe us with our positioning, that's fine. Um, hire a consultant, hire an electrical engineer, look at it. I mean, we're not making up where the best locations are just for the, just for the sake of it, not a marketing ploy. Based on a lot of factors that go into what is needed for um, Orange and Rockland to keep the grid resiliency, uh, things that as a lawyer, I don't understand and I don't pretend to understand. Um, Orange and Rockland, this is not the right form. I get that. Orange and Rockland's here, have questions, but I think, you know, you can get.
Honestly, I don't think we have any questions. Just a matter of do we want someone to go ahead and ask these guys and see if this is who we want to hire? So.
Right.
That's just.
I think this chairman, you know, and I'm not trying to negotiate against myself, but it might make sense to have, um, this consultant will tell you about fire safety. They're not going to be able to tell you about location. Who may need, you know, when, um, you may need to talk to somebody else as well.
Yeah, it's possible, so.
I'm not disagreeing.
Thanks, Rob.
Yep, thank you.
So I think I want to start off the fire safety issues and look at the consultants that we've received, because I think that was, that was the first concern with the, from the board last month. So if you would like, I can contact both firms, ask them um, to provide us some information on their experience with these systems and where, you know, and a couple of projects they worked on, and I can send those over to the planning board for your review.
Okay.
That seems sensible to me. That was what we agreed on the last meeting, that gathering was without purpose specifically.
Yes.
Okay, anything else on that?
Um, just, there was, I just wanted to point out to everyone in that letter, there was also, if anyone wanted to do a site visit, they recommended that. I don't know if you saw that. At the time that you're ready.
Okay.
In an alternate location. They did offer that up. Okay?
Fair enough. Thanks Suzanne. All right. Next thing is what? The continued public hearing for Stage Street Associates.
Correct.
Proposed office warehouse site plan.
Uh, pause unmuted.
There he is.
Okay.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you.
How you doing?
Well, good job. So um, thank you. Thank you for for having us here. Um, we will last before the board on on February 25th. And we've submitted revised plans that were revised as of, I think the date is uh, March 11th to address comments raised by Eve and Valerie. We've also filed a formal application for wetlands permit to disturb that small portion of the regulated 100-foot buffer of the wetlands to the rear of the property. Um, we've submitted the response to the part two, which was discussed at the last meeting, and the board was satisfied with our uh, our, our responses and directed the planner to prepare a negative declaration for the project. So basically, uh, we're here tonight looking for one, our negative declaration. Two, um, we have waivers requested for parking space size to reduce the width of the employee parking from nine feet, eight and a half feet. And also to reduce the size of the loading burst. Um, three, we'd like to get the override of those three comments from the Rockland County Department of Planning GML Review Letter, comments 1, 2, and 18. Um, and hopefully, uh, the special permit and site plan approval for this project. We've been um, waiting a long time and I think we're there. Um, the comments, the recent comments from Eve and Valerie seem to be very minor. And we're prepared to address all those comments as well as respond to any other issues that the board has with regard to the project.
Okay. Valerie, do you want to start us off with your comments on the revised plans? You don't mind?
Sure, I'm just, uh, just to talk a little bit about seeker first. Um, I did, I did send a draft negative declaration for the board's consideration for this meeting. So if you have any questions or concerns on that, I'm happy to ask, um, answer any of those. I think as the, as the applicant just um, summarized, my comments are minor at this point. It's just identifying that we should note on the waiver. I just highlighted that both the lighting has been addressed since last round. Landscaping, I believe, you know, the applicant is proposing a robust and diverse planting palette, but again, um, it's always worth the planning board just to confirm if you have any questions or um, want to make sure that the landscaping will suit uh, your concerns, especially with the neighbors. And then the Rockland County Sewer, there's just one thing I just wanted to note was just an easement that needs to be shown on the plans. Other than that, we don't have any other outstanding items at this point. And then clearly, we need to finalize the seeker review. And if this board is looking to do a site plan approval this evening, I would suggest um, having it on conditions uh, to any outstanding items for Eve as well as myself and these two memos that were presented this month as well as that you're going to have to override the GML comments 1, 2, and 18.
It's Suzanne. They, in your last memo, you recommended they go to ARC. They also need to do that.
Yes, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And I don't know that we got the final comments from the DOT, did we Rachel?
No, so I think those will need to be also incorporated as a condition.
Otherwise, you are happy with the plan as presented?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Eve, what do you think?
I did prepare a letter as well and uh, most of the comments that I've noted Valerie has addressed. I do have a couple of additional ones. One of them was the status of the DOT permit. And Rachel, did you have a feeling if your entrance drive was going to be acceptable or did you have to modify it for a?
I think that we are okay. That's why I'm trying to get the get the sign off from the DOT. Um, and then this, this latest one had where we were able to get additional information to confirm that 2% and then going down like we talked about.
That's great.
We need to go out there and get more field shots to confirm the condition.
That'd be great. And what about the uh, the DEC for your wetlands?
It's been resubmitted to them on, they, their prior reviews didn't seem too negative, like the last version, that the last comments they had. They wanted the level spreader coming out of the discharge, which was what was shown on this plan. Um, so I think that we're going to be okay on that because they've, uh, they've been responding. We haven't heard back on this one, but they haven't been as, as slow as the DOT.
Okay, so you're pretty confident that there will, there will not be any major revisions to the layout plan based on those approvals? Okay, that's a good thing. Um, I did note the waivers as Mr. Bamm had noticed that we're requesting. I do have a question about number four, limits of improvements along Route 59, and that will tie in to the DOT permit requirements. There is currently curb and sidewalk, but some of it may need to be replaced. Or based on the condition, um, based on handicapped accessibility and ADA ramps. And if in fact, the driveway has to be modified a bit. I did note the stormwater maintenance agreement will be required and I believe the applicant understands that.
Yes.
Number seven, we're retaining walls and the applicant understood that. In their response letter, they noted that would be completed. Um, I had one question regarding the limit of the privacy fence along the eastern retaining wall. It seems that there's a um, chain link fence within the grass area. But at the end of the turnaround, I think we need a privacy fence so the headlights of the cars don't shine directly toward Stage Street.
Okay, we can extend it. We can extend the fence for that limit.
Just for that little section there?
Yeah.
Okay, lighting plan to me, the intensities looked a little bit high. Um, I would suggest bringing them down a little bit lower. There were some hotspots in there with six-foot candles that are way too high. And then again, um, levels should be brought down and the applicant should provide hours of operation. Um, I can appreciate if they need some low-level security lighting in the evening, but the vast majority of the lights hopefully can be either substantially dimmed or turned off completely. Um, details of light poles, I didn't see unless I missed it because Valerie seemed to see the height. I didn't see, did you see that? Or maybe that was the prior application.
On the map, on the lighting plan from the lighting consultant, on each structure where they had them placed, it said like one at 18 feet or, I don't know that was the height, but like it said. For each one.
Okay, so the mounting heights were there?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. Um, and I believe again, as Mr. Bam noted, a village wetlands permit is needed for the intrusion into that regulated area, which is sort of a formality, because in this instance, the DEC is issuing the permit as well. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
So nothing too major from what I'm hearing?
Not at all, no.
So in terms of this application, Mr. Chairman, um, tonight we can, you can consider looking to close the, uh, conclude the seeker process with, by issuing a negative declaration. But typically, this board will refer an application to the Architectural Review Committee for their recommendation prior to making final site plan approval, vote on an application. So I would recommend tonight also considering moving this particular application over to the Architectural Review Committee.
Then they got to get the DOT response.
Right, so you have a couple of different choices on that and we can talk about that a little bit more next month. If DOT does not respond by then, you could um, as a condition of approval, consider requiring that the applicant meet all of the Department of Transportation's comments. Um, but why don't we just wait till next month to make that final determination?
Okay. Any comments on the board members?
Oh, I had a question. Now, I, to refresh my memory, I'm pretty sure they already went to the ZBA and got all of these variances approved.
Yes.
I assume that the ZBA had the same Rockland County uh, number one issue to deal with and they over, oh, had override the county?
Right, so I think those, speaking with. Right, so I think those, speaking with the GML, I believe though all those three comments specifically referred to the ZBA variances that they did receive. So I believe the Rockland County comments came prior to the final ZBA decision. So at this point, I think really the overriding is just going to be acknowledging the fact that they did receive variances from the ZBA.
And it's Suzanne. There is an override, um, draft of, uh, override those GML comments from the ZBA. But, um, I need it back from Dan before I can distribute it to anyone. So hopefully have for the next meeting.
So it's really not necessary for us to override it as well then?
No, I had to do it, uh, send out packets and do a GML for ZBA, just like I did for planning board. So they overridden whatever their comments were for zoning. You have to do your own override for planning.
Okay.
And so we'd say, I would, we would have to have a resolution over, a special resolution just for the overrides.
Yeah, so I can put that together.
I also remember that there was a discussion about the well water and test, pre-testing and things like that. I don't know if we finally made a decision on that, but maybe we should wait to hear from the public before we do.
Thought that was resolved and addressed at the last meeting where we indicated that due to the distance and the grade of this property, there's, there's just no chance for the water runoff or, or the, uh, to, to get to these wells, and it's not a contaminated site. There's been, um, no record of any sort of, uh, fill or release of any contaminants on this property. And, um, I thought, I thought it was resolved at the last meeting.
I remember you mentioning that, but I don't think the board actually agreed to that formally.
Oh, I, I, I thought they did when they directed the planner to prepare a negative that they were okay with the response that we had submitted in our part two. But, um, if you want to discuss it further, we're, we're happy to discuss it further then.
Well, we can wait to hear the public comments about it as well before we dive into that again.
Okay.
Go ahead, Russ.
Sorry, before we get to the public comments, can we just, uh, review for the sake of the, you know, the already the GML issues we're looking to override? It was 2, 8, and something, and 18?
It was comments 1, 2, and 18.
1, 2, and 18.
Yeah.
One deals with the size of the guarantee.
Yeah, there were modifications.
Right, so the first comment, one, uh, dealt with the setbacks associated with the bulk standards. So they identified the areas of lot width, uh, front setback as well as total side setbacks were deficient.
So.
Go ahead. Number two, which was, it noted that had, that the applicant had the front setback of only seven feet, and is described in addition to the existing office, the site plan notes that the existing structure is two and a half, two and one-half frame dwelling. Hold on. Sorry, I'm just trying to find, get to the point of this. And this also dealt with bulk regulations, given that the more restrictive bulk requirements that come from the office warehouse in the likelihood that existing non-conforming structures removed, the board must not grant any allowances for any not existing non-conformity. And then.
The height of loading.
Yeah, and then the 18 was landscaping plan should be supplemented to include low evergreen shrubs or berm on the southern side, and this really specifically dealt with the employee parking area to block headlights from parked vehicles.
Valerie, wait, wait, I'm sorry, are we looking at the same letter? I'm looking at the GML letter of October 21st, 2020.
That's going to say that. I have a different GML. We did.
Oh, you know what? I apologize. I am looking at an older GML.
Because they revised the plan and moved the parking at, uh, out of the, um, residential area and eliminated that. And we, I sent it out for a second GML dated October 21st.
Yeah, I don't have that GML in front of me.
Do you need me to email it to you?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to read it, if you have it now.
I have it in front of me.
Yes, why don't you read it, and then I can get it from you later on.
Um, permitting development that does not comply with the applicable bulk standards can set an undesirable land use precedent and result in overutilization of individual sites. The lot width is 66% of the required minimum for warehouse use. The front setback is deficient by 77%. The side and total side setbacks are only 10% and 43% compliant respectively. The side yard is deficient by 75%. The required buffer from residential zoning districts has been reduced to zero. The ability of the existing infrastructure to accommodate increased activity on non-conforming parcels is a county-wide concern and must be evaluated. This evaluation must consider whether local roads will become more congested and the sewer system, stormwater management systems, and the public water supply will be overburdened. The village must consider the cumulative and regional impacts of permitting such development. The number and size of the buildings must be reduced so that the proposal more closely conforms to the village's zoning standards. That was number one. Do you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, number two. The two structures that house warehouses B, C, D, E, F, and G are proposed to have side setbacks of only five feet. In addition, the parking area to the west of these structures, as well as the parking area to the south of warehouse H, extend to less than 10 feet from neighboring residential uses. Given the nature of the proposed activity, the proposed building height of 30 feet and incompatibility with residential uses, these distances are not adequate to provide the appropriate buffering from neighboring properties. The structures and parking areas must be reduced in size or relocated to provide adequate side yards and setbacks. And then the last one is number 18, I believe. Is that what you, was 18 the right number?
Yes.
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 No turnaround area is provided for the northeasternmost parking space and the northwesternmost parking space in center aisle of spaces in the southern parking area. Turnaround areas for these spaces must be provided. And that was the last one. So those are the three we have to do an override on.
So my question is, what latitude do we have afforded to us if the zoning board has granted variances? Because I think these are fairly significant, and I'm not comfortable with just overriding.
Might be helpful to see the logic the zoning board used to override it.
I'm sorry, say again, Dennis?
It might be interesting to see the zoning board's, uh, conclusions and rationale for doing that right.
Or you mean the resolution for?
That's, that's what I'm waiting for because I did drafts for 124 and 130 that Dan just has to, uh, give his blessing on. And that's why I couldn't put it in your packets because they're not finalized.
I presume they gave reasons and justification.
They did. They did. They did. They always do at ZBI. So I will hopefully have that in the next, for the next meeting.
But we're not necessarily bound by their determination, correct?
No, but, no, you're not bound, but they, they did put rationale as to what they, why they determined what they determined.
Right.
Well, I'll lose judgment until I see that rationale.
Okay.
And, and, and I, I would, I would just submit, Mr. Hock, that if, and I, I don't think it would be appropriate, nor would it be legal for your board to deny something because it didn't need a setback requirement when the zoning board has granted us relief from that requirement. So, um, you know, for you to rely upon the fact that we need a variance when we've proven our case to the zoning board that the variance was not going to impact the neighborhood and we were entitled to it, is, is kind of wrong.
That, that very well might be true, but they could potentially, they could potentially write their recommendations so that they're acknowledging the fact that a zoning variance was sought, but not necessarily planning reasoning means to override it. So if they really wanted to, they could identify as part of the recommendation that while they, you know, do, are concerned with the extent of the variances, the variances were received at the zoning board.
Okay.
Well, let's see what they said when the draft approved.
Right, because in zoning, a lot of planning issues were arisen, and they left those, those items to the planning board to determine. I can tell you that.
And I guess it was my understanding that we had pretty broad latitude in terms of the impacts to, uh, the, the residential neighborhood, uh, independent of specific zoning variances.
Well, we can talk a little bit about that, uh, a future application. I mean, our future meeting, maybe it's something like a Ben educational thing. We can talk a little bit about more coordinating between you and the zoning board and looking at those things prior to something going over to the zoning board. You know, you can always give recommendations to the zoning board about some of your complaining concerns. So that's something that we can talk about in the future.
I mean, what, while we were at the zoning board, we significantly revised these plans to eliminate a lot of the, uh, issues that seem to be objectionable to, to the neighbors, um, as well as to the county. By eliminating parking off Stage Street, we did shrink down the buildings a little bit. We did relocate the buildings and, um, you know, they, they were happy with the changes that we made and thought that we mitigated whatever potential impacts could arise by your result. And they left it up to the planning board to basically look at the screening and the buffering and the landscaping and the lighting to make sure that it's appropriate and it wouldn't, you know, the lights wouldn't project upon the net residential uses. And the landscaping was adequate, um, to provide screening to the adjacent users, so. That's why we're here, and that's why you're looking at the, um, planning.
Oh, with all due respect, I'd still like to see, uh, they're right now.
Okay.
All right, any other things from the planning board members before we open it up to the public? Make a motion to open this to public comment?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None.
Okay, um, if anyone would like to speak at the public hearing, um, either if I see you, raise your hand, or you can put it in the chat.
Don't we know who it is?
Yeah, if it's good, I don't see anyone.
Well, I see one.
I'm waiting for Chana.
Yeah, where, I was just going to say, where is Shana?
I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't even see you. Where are you?
You don't need to raise your hand. We know you're going to raise your hand.
Okay. I'm sorry, you're in the top corner. I didn't see you there. Followed off.
All right, so, uh, hi, welcome back for another monthly installment. Just, you know, if we have objections, we understand at State, on Stage Street that, uh, you know, what the, the, the Stage LLC wants to do. We, some of the things that we still are concerned about is, uh, talk about coordination between the boards. We're still waiting for a response, uh, that was suggested or, or a response based upon a suggestion by the zoning board about a clause which would prevent future use of 22 and 24 Stage Street for a parking, uh, future parking lot or access in general. So that was something that, uh, the other board was adamant about. I haven't heard really anything since then. I did mention it in past comments, but it was thrown aside. Also, there was a survey done by Stage LLC, um, regarding trees on 22 and 24, uh, Stage Street in the past few weeks, which is great. I love the fact that I saw that. That's great. But I'm still curious about the cleanup in general, about the downed trees. Also, the, the structure that has fallen that's been on that property for over a dozen years. And, uh, with the cleanup, hopefully of the downed trees that are, are not doing too good, it can promote other additional, uh, natural growth to help, uh, shield some of what buildings, uh, will be erected from this project. Other things, uh, I'm hoping that the, the project and, um, Stage Street LLC will be willing to work with neighbors for additional shrubbery, especially along that eastern, uh, side since, uh, it's pretty darn close to their houses, and, uh, we have a lot of little kids there, uh, which is kind of scary. An additional planning for, uh, the back facing, um, parking spots facing, uh, Stage Street. Also, I'm curious about the type of shrubs on there because I'll tell you what, the deer in the area, they have annihilated all of my shrubbery, um, in literally a 24-hour period, including all my deer-resistant holly bushes, gone with, within one night. So, um, it, it's just, there has to be some serious, um, consideration of what is shielding the properties. And also if there's an ability to revisit the plan at a later date with the concerns with lighting, um, and the sounds. Um, an additional, um, one more thing, taking a look at the traffic study. It mentioned, um, on peak hours going back and forth from coming out of the property, um, a minimum of 40, um, trucks going out in the morning and 44 at night. That's, it mentioned something about 10 seconds per each truck, but that's an awful lot during peak hours. And, um, it just seems kind of outdated when you're looking at, um, something that, that took samples of traffic on Route 59 from April of 2019. You're pushing two years ago. So we have a lot more traffic, uh, since then, like big time. Um, and also those wells on, on Stage Street on that side are about, uh, approximately 30 feet or less from this project, FYI. So those are just some of the things we are, are not happy with that. We still would really appreciate somebody looking into the whole idea of, uh, what would happen to our wells and our well water. So that's kind of where we stand.
Hey, one else? I don't see anyone else.
Oh, well, one last thing on a side note. We were outside, my family and I today. I've already gotten my first round of mosquito bites. So, uh, again, any additional flooding to the area or any other, um, environmental input from, um, the sources that regulate mosquitoes, that's just another indicator. It's not even April yet. We're getting hit with mosquitoes. So again, it's a very marshy area, so any additional water would be detrimental.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Was the parking provision that Chana referred to part of the ZBA's, uh, approval?
I can't hear you, Dennis. I couldn't hear you very well.
Chana's mentioned of the parking, the parking.
That is part of what's in the, um, draft, yes, that you have to review.
Okay.
It's not been ignored. It just, I don't have it.
Okay.
I do. With approval.
So it looks like we're going to have to continue the public hearing. Hopefully, April 22nd, is that our next meeting?
That is our next meeting. Correct.
So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I can, I mean, we're, we're looking to get our negative and move this process along. I understand if the board wants to continue the public hearing and, and look at some more issues. We're, we're fine doing that. We're, we're happy to address whatever issues the board brings up. But I think with regard to the environmental impact, we've responded to everything. Your planner has acknowledged we've responded and addressed all outstanding environmental concerns, and the board was comfortable last week directing them to prepare a negative declaration. So we'd at least like to get to that stage at this meeting. If the board's not willing to entertain a vote on the special permit and the site plan or the GML override, we would at least like to get our negative declaration and perhaps the waivers, uh, with regard to the size of the parking spaces and the loading burst tonight. But at least the negative.
Well, I have to continue the public hearing first.
Okay, I thought you were going to just continue this thing to next week, and we were going to be done.
While we can't do anything until DOT and we take a look at what the zoning board said as far as writing one.
I understand that, but I, I, I think you're, I think you are in a position to adopt the negative declaration at this, at this meeting.
I'd like to hear from my consultants and how they feel about the wells and lack and doing some protection or no protection.
Well, let me, let me continue the public hearing, and then we can hear from the
Okay.
consultants. Then we can talk about the negative declaration. So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on 22 April at
7:30.
30 PM via Zoom, unless we can meet in person at Town Hall. Thirty PM via Zoom unless we can meet in person at Town Hall, the Village Town Hall. Thank you, Dennis, all in favor?
Hi.
Unopposed. Okay, now Dennis had a concern about wells, what do our consultants think about it?
Mr. Chairman, I could address that if you'd like.
Thank you, Eve.
Stormwater system that's designed and and Rachel, feel free to to jump in to further describe your design if if need be. The design is presented as a pre-treatment before the water goes into an infiltration system. And the system is located toward the rear of the property. It's south of the row of buildings. So I'd call it west, west of toward the western part of the site and south of the buildings. I'm not sure where the nearest well is. Shayna had mentioned it's within thirty feet of a property line. But I'd be curious to know what property line. We could look at the position of the well, but in general, there is no guideline, it's not, they're using a piped sanitary sewer system, they're not introducing a septic. They're not drilling another well, you know, and those are criteria that the health department reviews, there are very specific separation distances between other wells and septic systems. But for an infiltration system, there may be some requirements, but since this system is sort of nestled toward the middle of their site. It will, it won't have an impact on the well. If the well was immediately adjacent to it, I think it might be worthwhile looking at it. But at this instance, I don't see how there could be any impact to the the existing wells on the nearby sites.
Okay, but if I hear you correctly, we'd like to know where that well is at.
Yeah, because only because Shayna mentioned it's in close proximity, but if you look at the plan, you have wetlands behind them, up north in Nantibello. That's a development, so I don't think she's referring to that. Her property is across the street, so that would be in probably excess of a hundred feet. Then there's the wooded area that's east of the property. So I I'm not quite sure which property has the nearest well. So perhaps Shayna, if you have a survey of the location of that well, you could certainly send it on over to me and I can take a look at that. Yeah, but as you know, wells are in the jurisdiction of the Department of Health. Not within.
I was trying to find the comment box and I apologize, but it's all the the bottom three ha- three to four houses along that side. All of those wells are approximately the same amount of distance from the backside of their properties to the wellheads.
Okay, so are you, can you, if I don't, the plan I have on the vicinity map on sheet one of twelve. Could you potentially tell us what lot numbers they're located on so we have a better idea?
Sure, it would be nineteen state, no, wait, it would be the last three houses. So the the one across the street from me.
We don't have addresses on our plan, we have lot numbers.
If you, if you sure, if you were able to share your screen, I could tell you the lot number.
That would be great if.
Rachel, can you do that?
Yeah.
That would be, that would be great, thank you.
So this lot is lot three, it says it was formerly Pasternak. This is four Pasternak and then this is five Rogirio. Do you know if those?
All three of those properties have wells approximately the same distance from the backside.
So from the detention system to the property line is or is about forty-five feet. And then you're also gonna have the distance on their property. It's also important to know that everything, you know, tends to, it migrates downhill. So we are pretty much in line with the wells. The only one that is down at all is this last last house, but again, there's no indication that there would be any impact. We're cleaning the water with the pre-treatment unit, it's being, going through infiltration and it will be clean water. That's part of what's reviewed by the, for the SWIP, by the DEC regulations, everything meets the DEC regulations. And there will be a DEC permit.
Right, and I would add that the runoff from their parking lot is not going to travel east. It's going to be collected and discharged into the wetlands, which will be, as you know, the wetlands act as a natural filter. There's actually, if there's any potential for well contamination, it would be from the property to the east of them, because I believe their parking lot runs out to the back into that pond. So this and this development is actually improving the situation because the runoff from the pond is gonna be rooted through a pipe directly into the wetlands. So there's no opportunity or less of an opportunity for for of the runoff from the parking lot from the, I believe that's the medical building running off toward those lots. So I would say that this is actually an improvement to the situation.
Okay, thank you, Eve.
Thank you.
What do you think, Dennis?
Our experts say it's safe, so I'm okay.
Any other questions before we get to the negative declaration? Are we ready to do a neck deck on the applicant? It would be unlisted, uncoordinated review.
Anyone offering tea?
I wish.
I can go get some, where do you live? I can DoorDash it over, is that what you're drinking or you're drinking vodka over there?
Waiting for tea to be served.
Well, if we're gonna kill each other, you have no chance.
That's right.
It's against requirements.
We okay with a negative deck?
I am.
All right, Dennis, you're okay?
Does the negative deck influence all overriding the county or not? Does mission to override the county?
No. It just is identifying that there's no significant adverse impact associated with this project with respect to environmental impacts. So it's not saying that there's no. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right, and what the applicant is proposing is is addressing any potential and mitigating any potential for adverse impact. For instance, by providing a stormwater management system, by providing the buffering, things of that nature.
And the negative declaration that I provided you identifies both the areas where there will be no significant adverse impact as well as mitigation measures that are being identified.
Okay, thank you.
Do you good?
I'm good.
All right, then I make a motion to issue a negative declaration for State Treats Associate LLC, one thirty Route fifty-nine for a proposed office warehouse. And it will be unlisted. And could we just submit the document that Valerie proposed into the minutes?
Second.
Thank you, Dennis, all in favor? Any opposed? None, motion carries. Now, I don't know if we're gonna be able to override the GML, Paul, until we get the
DBA information.
DBA information.
How would the board feel about acting on our waiver requests? For the for the employee parking in the rear of the lots to reduce those parking lot stalls from nine feet, eight and a half feet, and also to reduce the loading burst to I think, I think we requested twenty-eight feet or twenty-five feet.
I would, I mean, I would suggest if if the board is open to providing those waivers, I would suggest doing that for during your site plan approval, because then we can work it into the overall resolution.
I agree, I think we should wait and do it all at once.
Yes, I'm actually worried if we did it early.
I think, I think the thing is, if for some reason this board has concerns with issuing those waivers, that should be identified now. Because then the applicant would need to go back to the ZBA to get variances for this.
Well, I don't think anyone has any concerns about that, do we? Discuss that the last minute, the last meeting?
No concerns.
I believe the applicant did commit to limiting the size of the truck that would access the site. And they think they were gonna remain in control of the property, they'd have the ability to control the leases and explain to their prospective tenants the maximum sized truck that would be permitted on site.
Can we put a note on the plane?
I believe there's already a note on the plane.
There are no plane, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, there is.
So I think we have to wait on that call. But I don't, one here has any adverse comments against it.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I think the last thing this board might want to consider is moving, recommending for this application to go to Architectural Review Committee for their review.
It is a good recommendation, thank you.
So does the planning board act as the Architecture Review Board?
No.
Separate board and does that, and does that have to be approved prior to your final approval? Or can it be subject to, and we could get their approval after the fact?
Recommend.
Yeah, they recommend you.
So you approve, okay, so they make the recommendation to you and you basically give the approval as the planning board, I got you, okay.
It's a committee, not a board, Paul. And the submission deadline is the first Tuesday of a month, so that would be if you wanted to do April, April sixth. And the meeting is always the third Tuesday of the month at seven PM. And that would be April twentieth. And typically, there's a chairperson and it's usually the two ad hocks from the planning board that sit on the ARC.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll make sure we get that application into this board.
Okay.
Okay, Paul, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Is Dunkin' Donuts? It's your chance to get.
We're here, don't go away. Before we get started, can I ask how Dan's doing?
He's, he's home, but he's not doing too great.
Well, if you talk to him, send my regards.
I will, thank you. Would be better. Excuse me. Do you guys wanna start?
Yeah, if you guys are ready, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Can I start, or are you gonna?
Susan, Dave, can I share my screen for Ken?
Sure, let me just. Okay, go ahead, you're good to go.
Okay.
I can watch.
Are you gonna put something up on the screen?
Yeah.
Did you say, okay.
Yeah, it just takes a second.
Everybody see that?
Yes.
We're here for the Dunkin' Donuts. We're asking for a drive-through, this is the Dunkin' Donuts as located on the corner of North Debonne and North Armont Road. Currently, there is a Dunkin' Donut shop inside the store, there's a convenience store and then there's a Gulf gas station on the site. They've been there for many years. And what we're proposing is that we want to add a drive-through to the Dunkin' Donuts. There's a number of reasons why we want to do this, but one of the big reasons is because of this pandemic, which now is a year old. The customers have changed their buying habits and they don't want to get out of the car if they don't have to. And this will provide that service to them, it's a service not only for our customers, but the community in general to to do this. And by adding a drive-through to this, according to the village definitions, this now becomes a fast food restaurant. Even though there's no seating, the food that's being served is the same that was being served before. And it's no different than it was, except that now we're proposing the drive-through. And by the definitions, that now becomes a fast food restaurant, which has different requirements than if it was just a store or a restaurant. And one of the the biggest changes is that they require two acres for fast food restaurants. Which is a large piece of property, it doesn't matter how big the fast food restaurant is, two acres is a minimum. So we have that and the bulk requirements that go along with that are increased substantially because of this categorization. By having a drive-through. So what we need is we need a site plan approval, which we've applied for. We need approval of a special permit for a fast food restaurant. And then we have to go to the ZBA for variances, we do require a number of variances. This is a type two action, so we don't need any environmental review. And what we're requesting now is, we want to be, excuse me. I have warm water today. We want to go to the ZBA, which would have to grant us the variances before we can go ahead. We've responded to all the comments from the village consultants, we believe we addressed them in a complete manner, where we modified the proposed site plan a number of times to address the issues. And we've come up with a plan that actually will improve the conditions. Even though we're adding a drive-through, the conditions will be improved from the current conditions and it'll make it a much more efficient and safe operation. And we've had a engineer, surveyor, traffic consultant, landscape architect and other professionals prepare drawings and revise them according to the comments we received over a number of months. So we will plan the drive-through to improve traffic circulation within the site of Dunkin' Donuts or gas station in Dunkin' Donuts. And also improve the traffic circulation in and out of Debonne and North Armont Road. So we propose, as far as the changes, we propose to close the current entrance exit on Armont Road, the southerly most entrance and exit. And we propose also to add and exit at the end of the drive-through. Which you can see, the drive-through is the gray, is in gray behind the red building there that's illustrated on the on the map. And then, so it would exit onto North Debonne, it would not have to go back into the site. And then it would just go out to Debonne and there's a traffic signal there, which makes the traffic much easier to control. And we felt that this is the most efficient way to design a site. We've had consultations with the fire department and they said that this drive-through will accommodate emergency vehicles and the fire vehicles. And because there's a pass-through lane in addition to the drive-through lane. So we've planned for that, we've redesigned the parking on-site. So it's more efficient and it prevents or reduces the number of people. or reduces the number of people that would be walking in the parking lot, crossing over to the convenience store, or puts them closer to the convenience store to help alleviate any problems with any conflicts between the cars and the customers. Now, what we need is the variances and we just heard the application prior to our application. And one of the main concerns was the buffer, because with a fast food, you have to have a seventy-five foot buffer. Okay, and in this case, there is no room on the site for seventy-five, there's no room for any buffer. It's similar to the last application, which had no, zero buffer. So in order to provide the necessary screening and to reduce any negative impact on the apartments, we're proposing screening, additional screening, fencing, a lot of plantings. And we've reached an agreement with the apartments, the owners of that property there, so that we can utilize part of their property along North Devon and in the rear to put in plantings, so that that would screen it. Now, we're not close to the apartments, in fact, we're over two hundred fifty feet away between our site and where the drive-through would be, and the first apartment, which is a long distance. Then we also have, on the southerly side, it's North Devon Avenue, so there's no, there's nothing there to screen, although we are putting screening there. On the east side, it's North Armont Road. And on the north side is the O and R substation. So we're providing a lot of screening, but really, the apartments are protected, they're not, there's not gonna be any negative impact on them. Again, there's no room for any buffer seventy-five feet, because we're limited by the site. And this problem arose, one of the biggest issues was this COVID- nineteen, that people don't want to get out of the cars and go in when they can go, you know, they'd rather go to the drive-through, this has been shown industry-wide that this is sites with drive-through are maintaining their customers, whereas if they don't have a drive-through, they're losing their customers, and some of them would not be able to survive without those customers and without a drive-through. So we have submitted a landscaping plan, a planting plan, which I believe you reviewed already, we submitted this a while ago. And there's been numerous reports and comments, we responded to all of them. And we believe we've resolved that in an agreeable way with the Village. And again, again, this is like the last application, we do have a number of variances that are required because of this change of designation. There was some existing non-conforming bulk requirements before this, and now we're creating some other ones because of the change in the bulk table because of the fast food restaurant. But it's not so much the number of variants we're requesting, is that it's the effect that granting the variances will have on the community, the neighborhood, the apartments in the back, and basically what we're doing is gonna improve the situation, it's not gonna make it any worse, in fact, it's gonna be better than it was, and better than it is existing now, because of what the work that we've done. So we need to go to the zoning board. And then we'd have to come back for the site plan approval and for the special permit approval. And I have other people here tonight, we'll go into details if you'd like to have any questions, if you still have any questions about this, again, we have gone through this a number of times already. And each time we've had, we've come back and revised the plans and met the comments, which I think was an agreeable solution. And we did get a negative disapproval from the county, but this was before we made a lot of the changes. And those comments regarding the number of variances is is like a standard comment, if there's, they go just look at the raw numbers, they don't look at the situation. I've had that in numerous applications, where they've come back with the same kind of comments. So we'll have, again, the applicants, the owners of the property, and other people that are working on the project who will comment tonight if you have any questions, but basically, I want you to listen to what the owners and the operators of the location have to say, if you have any questions, they'd be happy to answer them.
How many variances are you asking for currently?
Currently, I believe it's twelve.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Okay.
Thirteen. So I put this. So what I have on the chart right now is on the right-hand side is the thirteen variances, there's twelve variants, twelve variances in one waiver for the parking that we're requesting. On the left-hand side, where it shows existing, this is how the property exists today, and there's six pre-existing non-conformings on the property. In the center, it's just hypothetical, I looked at it as if it was just a restaurant use, not a fast food, but just a restaurant, not at the same site plan that we're proposing, no changes, right? So exactly the way it exists on the plan I was just showing a minute ago. If it was just considered a restaurant, not a fast food, it would only require three variances, which is actually an improvement to what exists there today, again, no changes in the site plan. And as Ken mentioned, that when you change the use, per zoning, right? The regulations, that number goes an additional ten variances, just by changing the use to a fast food versus just a restaurant use.
And that scenario one, is that taken to account as a gas station there as well?
It does. Yep, yeah, that is the convenience store gas station, the way it exists today with the six pre-existing non-conformings. So, you know, from where it sits today, again, in the middle, scenario one, it's just hypothetical, right? But from where it exists today, it's six non-conformings, then we go to thirteen with the proposed, when you change the classification, as Ken mentioned.
Right, to be perfectly clear, though, scenario one is assuming that the gas station is fair, correct?
Yes, scenario one is as the property exists today, operating a Dunkin' with the gas station convenience store, no changes.
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay, Ken, I have a question for you on the status of the agreement with the Amont Gardens, is that a written agreement, is it the easement, how long does it last? What rights do you have?
So I can speak to that a little bit, this is Jeff Stewart, I operate the Dunkin' Donuts portion of the business. And I have spoken to Peter Murray, who represents the owners several times. He, in each of our conversations, he has expressed support for the project, is willing to go and has the owner's backing to go to the lawyers to get the easements granted. We need to get, I, my proposal to him was, let's get to the zoning board, where we're going to be needing to argue for the variances. And if we are able to get variances contingent upon any easement, then that's when we would probably go to the lawyers with them.
Okay, so you're not there yet, but if needed, you think you can get it?
Yes.
Yeah, and you can see the distance that we're talking about, behind the existing convenience store gas station. We're over two hundred fifty feet away to the residents, who we have their support of, and just to the, to the private road in North Devon that goes behind the building in separate, we're fifty-plus feet away behind that as well.
Yeah, and just to reiterate what Ken was describing, if you can go back a second, Dave. So the, as I understand, the ordinances, they're designed to protect the neighboring property and the neighborhood, right? So when we thought about the nature of the variances, they're all virtually associated with setbacks and the size of the property, and the potential impact we would have on our neighbors. If you look to the north, as Ken said, there's an O and R substation. We're not gonna really have any meaningful impact on them, there's already a substantial buffer there in terms of the planting. If you look to the east, it's North Armont Road and Commercial across the road, Friendly's. If you look to the, to the south, we've got North Devon and more Commercial, and the only residential community there is behind us in excess of two hundred and fifty feet with a road in between us. And we've got their cooperation, they're willing to work with us on this. So it seems like if there were ever a case to be made for variances, this would meet it, I mean, I know I'm not a voting member of the planning board, or the zoning board, but I it was like this is kind of what the variances are designed to accomplish, is to allow development in a space that may not, on the books, warrant it, but when you look at it from that perspective, the impact on the neighborhood, it's not gonna be meaningful. In fact, we've already had the traffic consultants say that the design is improving the traffic, there's no net negative to the traffic surrounding the building and actually improves the flow on the property. I know many of you guys frequent the, the gas station and the Dunkin' now. And it can get congested, this is an improvement on what is currently there.
Yeah, so if I could, I could elaborate a little more on what Jeff's talking about, so this is the revised plan that our consultants put together, and we've gone through it a few times, but there are some some benefits or improvements from what it exists currently today, right? So one of the big changes is we're blocking off the southerly curb cut, which is congestion today, right? So it gets, it's right in front of the light, so that improves the traffic on North Armont, so that the cars are not exiting right at the light, that's a problem today, so we're kind of fixing that problem. Secondly, we're adding the drive-through to go completely around the building, which doesn't exist today, right? And now, that's where the majority of the Dunkin' traffic's going to go and exit, and more importantly, on the exiting, it's furthest from the North Devon traffic light, so again, stacking, so again, in the, as it currently exists today, all those cars are fighting to go in and out one of these two curb cuts or the third curb cut. This forces the traffic around the building with the majority of that, so that's an improvement from what it exists today. And then inside the lot itself, what we're finding is a major problem, is, you know, cars, they just, they leave their vehicles at the gas pumps, right, it backs up traffic. They park in the fire lane right against the building to go and get your coffee and your donut, right? And there's a lot going on here. There's currently existing ten parking spaces for the property. With this layout, adding the drive-through, we actually increased it to twelve, right, so we added more cars. But the bigger difference is, on top of the twelve cars, or the two we added to the property, there's another ten to twelve cars that you're able to queue or stack in this drive-through lane, right? So that really, it's freeing up a lot of this real estate in cars that are getting congested in the property and getting into the drive-through lane. So again, if you're stopping to get gas, you finish what you're doing, you get in the lane, or vice versa, right? And then those cars are now exiting off the property instead of staying in the property, right? So that's a significant improvement. And as Ken mentioned before, we moved the cars, so we got more cars that are very convenient to the to the building without crossing any additional traffic. Other things we've added, we didn't have a loading area before, we've accomplished one over here that doesn't interrupt any of the other park. And then we added this bypass lane around the building, that's one for trash, trucks, and fire access, right? That didn't exist, so that's an improvement that really had no impact on that, so again, we're moving a lot of that traffic around the building. And then as Jeff was mentioning, the other big improvement is the amount of landscaping we're adding. And I'll just go to that plan real quick. So we're adding landscaping, you know, on North Armont, Devon. And again, understanding that these are very tight, and this is a private road, we have the permission, like Jeff mentioned, from the property that was behind us, and they're blessing on us, and they're allowing us to use some of their property to increase that buffer. And again, that's the only residential residence that butts the property.
Eve, is there a variance needed? Or does it, maybe it's already an existing condition, but doesn't make this, does this make it worse in terms of lot coverage?
Yeah, it does, there previously, the rear yard was grass and vegetation. And there is, that is one of the variances noted, I believe, if you go to your bulk table.
Yep, it's right here, so the rear yard, because of the drive-through lane goes to, required this thirty to go to thirteen.
Was point five eight. What's allowed is point seven five. And what's being proposed is point eight oh. Is being increased, they have provided stormwater management system to accommodate the increase in runoff. And the stormwater management system is located in the rear yard, an underground system that distributes into the existing piped system that's on-site.
So how much is developed, what percent of the lot is developed now? What percent will be under this plan, and what's the requirement?
That's what I just read to you, so in the bulk table, the coverage right now is point five eight percent.
Okay.
And they're going up to point eight zero percent. So that's a point two-two increase.
Okay, and what should it be for no variances?
Without a variance, you'd be able to go up to point seven five percent, so they are point oh five over.
Oh, okay, so, got it. So they're way under now, and they'll be a little over with this.
Slightly.
Correct.
Is this, is this an okay time for me to say something, or I don't want to take anyone's time away from the board? This is, Judd Wish, now my wife Erica, we were the owners of this store and this store on Route fifty-nine. Just wanted to make sure everyone, and I think it's probably obvious, we're not Dunkin' corporate, obviously, we're small business owners who love these stores and have spent more than a decade investing time and money into this, into this neighborhood. And I think what Eve will probably be able to tell you, and probably everyone on the board realizes, is we have done everything humanly possible, there's no amount of money we are gonna stop spending to make sure we get you guys exactly what you want. And the reason we're doing this is not because we're trying to, you know, make a few more bucks, we're basically trying to curb what's going on right now at all of our non-drive-through stores, there's just, there's an enormous outflow right now. Fortunately for us, there's just not a ton of overlap in terms of the customers at the, on the Suffolk side, on the Route fifty-nine side, and the one that's at the gas station. Had that been the case, we would have just captured them all in Suffolk, and we could have, you know, maybe even shut this store down, but the reality is, a lot of the customers that live in your area don't necessarily want to go to the kosher Dunkin', they want to go to the normal Dunkin', so to speak. And we have, we have an issue, it's a safety concern for everyone, you know. I think that you will find, it's not just with us, it's not just with Dunkin', it's just the trend right now. I think it's gonna last longer than we want it to be, but we're in a situation right now with that store where we can put a lot of money into this, make it a much better traffic flow, make it a much safer environment, both from a traffic perspective and from a health perspective. And by the way, if we can generate more sales, it means more employees, it means more opportunities. We just want to make it clear that we are here to do whatever you guys say, and I can't possibly enforce that enough. You tell us what we need to do, and we will do it. I think that the team has done an incredible job at addressing your prior concerns. But I understand that you guys have a lot of deals you look at, a lot of opportunities you look at, and everyone, you know, everyone asks favors and asks for you guys. And, um, everyone, you know, everyone asks favors and asks for you guys to, to give them a lending hand. I'm not here to claim poverty. I'm not here to claim anything, but this store is really struggling. And I think we improve everything from traffic flow to customer safety to, uh, potential sales revenues, you know, and, and tax revenue, uh, and jobs. Everything benefits from this and it basically turns us from a store that may not survive to a store that can really flourish. And so I just want to, I want to sort of say to you guys, we love the community. We've been there for a long time. We're not going anywhere. And I think as you guys are probably, some of you are probably customers of ours, everyone will benefit from this. Um, and if there's things that you guys are not seeing in this existing plan or, or responses we haven't made yet, uh, to requests you guys have made to us, let us know. We don't want to be the bottleneck. We want to give you guys exactly what you want.
Mr. Wishnow, did you say you own the Dunkin Donuts in Suffolk? Or the one, if you go the other way on 59, also in Armont or both?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. So it gets a little confusing between Suffolk and Armont and Paulman. So we own the kosher one on Route 59. That's, um, I guess if you're going, if you're going west.
The Burger King.
At a Burger King.
Yeah, yeah. And they say exactly in the same property as the Burger King. And what we found, you know, in some cases where we have a store, you know, near another store, we've actually shut down some of our stores already. The ones that didn't have drive-throughs because they got decimated and it made sense to shut it down because we would capture the traffic at another location. That's not what's happening here. Just because you guys understand as well as anyone, it really is, there's not a ton of overlap between the customer bases. Um, and so what we're trying to do is keep the, the, the gas station business alive, but not just that, frankly. I genuinely, I'm not, I, 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 I don't, you guys can give me the counter argument. I genuinely believe we are just making everything better, period. Safer in every way, and it's going to mean more jobs and opportunities and just more safety.
Hey, thanks.
So board members, I don't know if we can ask any other questions about the plan that's before us. The only thing I've heard is a tweak here and a little thing here, and I moved the parking spot. There's not much more we're going to do. I propose we open it up for a public hearing. And then send them on their way to the ZBA. Cause I can't do anything else and you can't do anything else until they review it and make a determination.
Mr. Chairman.
Fit through another, the cars are going to be stacked up 10 deep. I can't do it.
Mr. Chairman, um, similar to the prior, uh, application, a couple of board members expressed, um, concern about how to communicate to the ZBA, um, especially with planning issues. So this is an example of where if the board has any concerns or is in support of any of particular variances because they would make the plan better. This is something that the board might want to consider, um, any recommendation to the zoning board as they weigh, you know, their decision on the variances that are proposed.
Well, other than the, uh, that I mentioned earlier to get a legal document from Armont Gardens with an easement that gives them the right to plant what they want and maintain it.
We will obtain that. We will get, and, and Dennis, if, if, if we didn't, it's a moot point and we agree with you. We will get that.
No, no, I, to, to answer the question was, recommendations that we want to give to the, uh, or caveats that we want to give to the, uh, ZBA when they review it.
Got it. Sorry.
And the other thing is the GML that came out, they recommended disapproval.
Well, that's basically because of the variances deployed.
Well, they should at least be aware that we would have to override every single variance.
Okay. So would they?
They have to override the variance, not planning board. The zoning board has to override the variance. You have to override any planning, uh, issues.
Okay.
Cause I'm going to have to send out packets again, um, asking for all these variances that they've listed and get comments from all the agencies and I'll get another GML. Just like on the other application, we also had GML comments, whether they were a disapproval or a modification.
Right.
Just like on the other one, it's possible when you get back to the planning board, we'll have to override that.
Correct.
Might have to override that again, but maybe.
It depends.
So with that, is that enough concerns, Valerie?
Well, it's really up to the board. You, you don't even have to send any recommendations over to the, uh, ZBA. But this is an example of how you can communicate and coordinate with the ZBA if you have concerns. Or as I said, in the alternative, support a particular, um, variance because of a planning issue that that variance would, you know, improve upon.
Well, you know, I think what Dennis brought up and what the GML said, and I'm sure the GML is not going to change from when a new plan goes out. I'm sure the plus is we all like Dunkin Donuts.
Okay.
Those are the concerns, really. I mean, there's a lot of development in a small area. I got it. You're buying electric station and someone says they're going to give you some property to develop. All that has to be worked out, what otherwise, and even the traffic, um, Nelson and Pope just said the traffic in and out of the Dunkin was good. Nothing about the circulation inside. So that's going to be looked at too by the consultants.
I think so. That, that's been one of my concerns with this project.
Right. And I mean, you know, no sense beating it now because it may come back different. So I propose we make a, uh, motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Anyone in the public want to comment on the Dunkin Donuts?
Hello, I'd like to make a comment or a question.
Who are you?
I'm McDaniel Pesante.
And where do you live, McDonough?
I live at Armont Gardens.
Okay. Write your comments to the board. You got two minutes. Go ahead.
I'd like to know how they're going to make that exit and that entrance on the easement of the Armont Gardens easier than what it is right now? When the trucks parked there to have lunch, the deliveries are made right there at that entrance and that exit. And the tenants have a terrible time getting in and out of this complex.
Well, I, I mean, they can answer that as well, but I don't know if that's their issue with this. But the board, the village board can put in no parking over there if they want on one side to make things easier. And I know you have influence on the board.
Actually Dennis, that's a, that's not a, a village right of way there. That's a public, a private driveway.
Private driveway.
Ah.
Is it private? I, I was told it was an easement for the complex. I'm sorry about that.
It's actually, it's actually your property. It's Armont Gardens property. So you have the right to enforce it.
All the way down to, uh, Armont Road?
Yeah, that was my understanding. That's what the investigation showed when everyone pulled out the, the, all the maps. That section of the road was never dedicated to the village.
The easement of the Armont Gardens, is it?
No, it's Armont Gardens property, not an easement. You own that.
And we're not plowing that road, I assume that.
The, the other thing I just want to throw in there that, um, we added a loading area on the property, which doesn't exist today. So now there's an opportunity to have those trucks parked in the property out of the way. Um, where, you know, they didn't have that opportunity before.
So that will be the entrance and exit for the restaurant.
Uh, you, you referring to the curb cut?
Um, I'm, I'm referring to the exit of the residence at the building.
Yes, the drive-through is going to exit onto that, your entry road. That's the proposal right now.
Can I, can I, hi, Chris Vasti, uh, uh, property owner, uh, the, uh, property and the gas station. Um, the, I, the trucks that you're talking about, um, all of our loading, all, all of our trucks that come in and do our deliveries, um, they park inside the station. And other trucks that just come in there, um, park on the side and then just, you know, do what they do. But none of our loading or our, our trucks like that, uh, go on the side and, and unload. They come and they park either by the air machine, they park on the, the fire, the, not the fire lane, the gasoline side. They don't come, uh, I guess in, into your property unless, um, there's somebody doing something that I don't know about.
Right. I understand that and I'm not, uh, saying they do. I'm saying that that entrance and exit has become a stop for people who are delivering. Um, usually at Pepsi-Cola, Coca-Cola, those big trucks. Um, you have buses coming from upstate, dropping off children there and parents picking them up. You have, uh,
Yeah, but that's, that's not, that's not our, I mean, we can't stop a, a bus.
I'm not saying it's, it, it, uh, involves the Dunkin Donut. I'm saying that's going to complicate the situation of coming in and out of this complex. And, and you have to understand, this is a senior citizen development here when the ambulance, the fire trucks and the police are constantly coming into this area.
See, I, I think you, you bring up a good point that there's a, an issue and a problem, but I don't think it has anything to do with this project. I wonder if you can find out if the village is actually plowing that road or if they have their own private contract.
Yes, they do. They plow it.
Who does?
Um, Calucci.
Yeah.
But that's not.
Calucci's private.
Who? That's not.
Calucci is a, is a contractor. Joe, yeah, Joe Calucci is a private contractor.
Calucci is contracted by Armont Gardens.
Okay.
Yeah, he's a private, he's a private guy.
Well, I guess you have to go to your, uh, to the board, you, the owners of the, uh, Armont Gardens, ask them to, uh, take action on this by putting up no parking signs or whatever else they wanted to. But it has nothing to do with this project or, and the owners of this project have no control over this. At least that's the way I see it.
To say, I mean, and, and again, this is Jeff Stewart. I, we are looking forward to working with Armont Gardens. So if there's something we can do to help mitigate anything that is, you know, happening from a, a parking problem or whatever, we're willing to, to work with Armont Gardens if we can do something. I don't know what that would be.
Great. That would be great.
It, it sounds like your concern is that the increased traffic from the drive-through would, would complicate the situation with, with trucks. I don't want to say illegally because it's private property, but trucks parking in the road there and, and senior citizens trying to get in and out and emergency vehicles coming in and out. You're concerned that it would hinder that, I guess.
Yes, absolutely. That is the concern.
Yeah. To Jeff's point, I think we could certainly, uh, reach out to Armont Gardens. We'll work with them already on the, the improvements on the landscaping. If they're, if they would liked us to, as part of that work, put some no parking signs to mitigate and stop some of that uh, in that critical area. I'm sure we'd be happy to do that and work with them if that's agreeable to them.
Is that good? I'll just say we're, we'll be thrilled to have a, a restaurant there. Uh, so that people can walk to and, um, not have to cross the streets. And, um, there used to be a lot of people go to Dunkin Donut from here. It's just we have to be very concerned about, um, the safety of people.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much for listening.
The next person that wants, would like to speak is, uh, Daniel Meehan.
Hi. Hi, thank you. Uh, Daniel Meehan, um, 18 Ackerman Avenue. Um, the traffic studies were done during COVID. Is that correct?
Ken, when were they done? Do you know? They were done just recently. Yes.
Okay, um, uh, the, the plans, obviously everyone's worked really hard that, and that, it really looks very nice, I have to say. Um, what, uh, the traffic right now is not even in the same universe of what it will be when the pandemic's over with. Um, I don't know if that's been taken into account. Um, that intersection is gridlocked for at least two hours, probably from four 30 to six 30 most nights, um, on a normal night, um, during commuter time. Um, and just the, right, right now, the traffic is probably 20% of what it will be. Um, I don't know. Has anyone taken that into account?
I can't, I, I don't know the specific methodology, but Dave, maybe you do. I think that the, the traffic consultants took historical traffic data into consideration when they were doing calculations. And that was part of that intersection, uh, was really the, the entire reason that that southern entrance was, uh, closed was so that, uh, it wouldn't have a negative impact on that congested, uh, intersection there and try to free some of the traffic.
Yeah. And now it's horrible. I, people try to make a left out of there, commuter time. I, it, it's, I, you know, you're taking your life in your hands.
Yeah. And we, and, and we're also restricting the, uh, the only now, uh, entrance on North Armont Road to a right out only.
Okay.
So it's not a left permitted exit.
Excellent. Um,
And Jeff, you're a hundred percent correct. They, when they, they did do this study recently, but it took pre-COVID, uh, traffic counts in consideration, uh, when we, when we, uh, blocked the, uh, southern curb cut and restricted access in the northern curb cut to a right out. Um, so that, and DOT has reviewed that and agreed with the findings.
Okay. Um, any idea what volume, um, you're hoping to get once, once, let's say it's open? How many cars would be going through there a day?
I mean, we haven't, uh, we haven't really calculated the number of cars that we hope to, what, what I can tell you is our, our standard is to move the cars through rapidly at, at 150 seconds from menu board to exiting the, the, so we're, we're going to be designed so that we can handle quite a bit of traffic. I don't know what we're going to attract. I think that the traffic on the road probably isn't, uh, nobody's projected that's going to change. Um, it's just that we're going to be able to accommodate the guests that are currently parking in the, in the parking lot. And, you know, if we get additional traffic because of this, because people want to come through the drive-through, we will be equipped to handle them in an efficient manner.
Okay.
And our, and our standards are, are such that when in the, in that queuing lane, that's why we have, we're 10 to 12 deep. Uh, usually between six to eight, we're moving the cars through so that doesn't, doesn't increase the, you know, stacking on the property out their street and what else. That's, that's why we have that designed so long.
If I recall correctly, and then the traffic study was brought out that this was not going to be like a destination. It'll only take traffic that's already on the road to stop in.
Correct. That's correct.
Right.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
No, thank you. Absolutely.
Anybody else?
I don't see any other hands. I don't see anyone in the chat. Um, I think that's it, John.
Okay, so do we close the public hearing or continue it? But I don't know when. Or do we continue?
To a date uncertain.
Yes.
Yeah.
Probably that's what we're going to do. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing to a date uncertain.
You mean adjourn the public hearing.
Adjourn and then you need to be.
And it'll have to be renoticed.
Do they have to be renoticed?
Yeah, because we don't have.
Yes, because we don't know when it is because you have to refer them to zoning, depending how many meetings they have to go to zoning. When they come back, they renotice and republish.
All of that to a date unknown. That's the motion.
I got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. We'll let Dan sort that one out. All right. Now we gotta make a motion to recommend them to go to the ZBA to get variances for 13 items on their list.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion, refer them to the ZBA.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess the two concerns that Dennis had and the GML will be hopefully forwarded to them. And that's the motion. And that's the motion.
Same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And our last, uh, just, it's really a discussion item for the evening. Has to do with three College Road, uh, for the thruway project. Uh, to give a little history, they came for an amended site plan, which they got approved. The site plan technically expires because we changed the code from five years to three years with the comprehensive plan. It expires, I believe it's April ninth. Um, Passover is next week. Uh, they did break ground. But the issue is they don't, the thruway would not like them to continue with what they just started. Although they opened the permit up eight months ago and Lou can speak to that. Uh, the thruway has a thirty million dollar project and it's right, they're doing an overpass and it's right there. So they're asking for them to stop their work, but get an extension on their site plan till they finish their work. And this way, um, they can continue. And Lou, you can chime in on anything you'd like to say, or Eve. Cause Eve reviewed the thruway, um, the thruway plans and we did a, um, a field change that John signed off on. I believe it was August of last year.
That's correct Suzanne. There are some minor changes to the plan. It doesn't affect the, uh, number of parking stalls. Just the configuration along the frontage a bit. Um, and there are actually two items set. So one is the building permit, as Lou had mentioned. I don't know if Lou is still here.
Yeah, he's there.
I see you Lou, hi. Uh, so Lou can probably speak to the building permit, but in terms of the site plan, I believe they're out of time on the site plan too. And I thought we had given them one extension already.
No.
Uh, I don't know with COVID, did COVID extend, uh, site plan approvals as well?
But their plan was approved way, way before COVID started.
But the building permit was issued during COVID, so.
That you'd have to ask Lou.
That's what I wasn't sure of. Do, is there any leniency because of some of these activities occurring during the COVID period?
The, the owner did tell me the reason, because I asked him why he was starting later. His answer to me was, he was waiting for funds to be approved and during the pandemic, but I, that's all I know.
Yeah, the, the Village Board granted a hundred and twenty days additional to a building permit due to COVID.
Okay.
Which is not going to make it to two years that he needs, but, I mean, we could add that to what he already burned up. Eight months on this permit before he ever stuck a shovel in the ground.
Mm-hmm.
So he only has four months left.
So what I don't understand then, if he knew that he was going to have to pause for a good length of time, why did he start with his footings? Why would he want his footings to sit there for two years?
Because from what, in speaking to him, what he said was, he couldn't wait until this meeting tonight. Because he didn't know what the weather was going to be and with Passover, he wouldn't have had time to start it. At least with starting it, he, um, then he, it's not expired, but then we now have the issue of the permit.
Yeah, but starting the work didn't require him to put footings in, starting the work, he could have, and he could have done a little bit of clearing.
Correct.
I, I don't know what he did, that, that's.
He put in footings.
Okay. And didn't he clear trees, I think, Lou, or something?
Yep.
Okay.
The clearing was required to, you know, to implement that plan, yes.
I, I can't, I, I sent him a copy of the agenda if he wanted to join. I can't speak to that. I think there might be someone, I don't know if there's someone on from, from his attorney's office. I also sent a copy of the agenda to his attorney who sent that email to me yesterday. Um, but I don't know if they're on.
Like I mentioned that the change of the three to, of from five to three years was in the comprehensive plan.
That is true, and there was no grandfathering.
Okay, but with the federal government putting everything on hold, does that count this as well in terms of the zoning and the comprehensive plan?
No, the, uh, the executive order is really focused on building permits, not, not site plan approvals or comprehensive plans.
Okay, so that's how we pull the, no, after five years.
Right.
And, and when it did change, I did advise both he and his engineer, by the way, you got your approval. Um, I think it was, I don't remember, in eighteen, I think it was April of eighteen, I said, and we changed in October of eighteen from five to three. So I let them know so that they were aware.
So what can the planning board do?
Well, I think in good faith, the thruway is looking for the planning board to extend a site plan. Because they really want to, uh, can do their, their, this side of their work. They've, they finished the side on Mon- Muncie, but they can't complete the project without doing it on this side. And I don't know, um, I would assume, but I don't know, I would think that a Rockland County agency, uh, trumps anything else. But I, I, I legally don't know that.
What I think is, he has at least four months left. Let's hope Dan is better next month. He can tell us what our options are.
Or you can give it to Scott to look at.
Well, it's, I really think the board should just.
Yeah.
Extend the approval. I mean.
Yeah.
How long?
It's control that the DOT wants to do the work now. I can appreciate, he did delay for whatever reason, financial or other. But at this point, it is sort of beyond his control that the DOT would like to come in and fi- and finish their project.
Okay, so how long can we extend it? What's our period of extension?
Well, the, the thruway said they need at least until maybe next January or a little bit longer. But you know, construction always gets delayed and I, I don't know how long his project takes. I think Eve, you had a suggested amount, was it eighteen months to two years? Two years.
Twenty-four months.
And I will tell you Dennis, I did send all this information over a week ago to Scott. Okay, so.
We did, we did actually hear directly from the DOT, correct Suzanne? So they did.
DOT, the thruway authority.
The thruway, rather, yeah, they did speak up on behalf of the.
And they submitted the letter that I sent to all of you. And I forwarded you the email from the applicant's engine, uh, attorney from yesterday, but it talks more of about a permit besides the site plan.
So can we extend it for twenty-four months?
I believe you have the authority to do that. Uh, when it comes to the permit and if another permit has to be issued and paid for, that is between Mr. Kaufman, the owner, the applicant, and the thruway. We don't get involved in that. As long as we have approved the extension of the site plan, I think it's okay. But I'm not an attorney.
So I think the planning board would be in favor of extending, so I think we just got to know if we can extend it for twenty-four months. I'm sure we would.
I'm, I'm looking at the regulations right now, right? And that specifically says on here that the expiration of site plan approval, of planning board resolution, of which grants final site plan approval shall expire a hundred and eighty days after the date of the planning board resolution approval, unless the site plan map has been signed by the planning board.
Okay.
Right, that's been done.
Correct.
I can, I do not see anything where it says that. Uh, you look here. The tenure of the map or the final approval is limited to a period of three years from the data filing, within which time building permits shall be obtained, which they did do.
Correct.
So I don't see anything else after that, once they pull the building permit, that the site plan would expire. What ultimately would happen is your building permit process would have to expire. And at that point, they would ask for extensions to the building permit.
Right, and the extension to the building permit, the largest one I can grant is six months. So their, their building permit's going to long expire before they could start this project again. And when the building permit expires, their site plan variant, the site plan approval goes with it. So that's the point they're trying to avoid.
Right, so I'm not so sure, right, so my thought is on this, instead of the extension of the site plan approval, could there be an exception to the extension of the building permit? Because of due to extenuating circumstances.
That may have to go to village board, I'm not sure.
Only the village board could waive fees and extend a, a building permit.
Correct.
That's the answer.
But, but I do think we need to do something about the site plan as well.
Well, I think if they extend the building.
Well, if the building permit is in effect, then the site plan remains in effect.
Right, it remains in effect. So right now, there's nothing that's expiring, but I do think that the village board might want to consider, um, extending the building permit for this particular application.
Or banking it.
Yeah.
Bank to four months he's got left, plus the one eighty, and then put it towards the next permit when he opens it in two years.
I think that might be easier to have the village board undertake this work. Um, because I don't see off, right now, the code doesn't authorize the, the planning board to approve, I mean, to extend site plan approval. But right now, the site plan is not expired because they have an actual building permit in hand.
Right. I mean, just, just to point out, there, um, is a reorg meeting, there is going to be a, a newer board. I don't know that I can get this on for the April fifth meeting. And then there's a workshop meeting on the April nineteenth. And the thruway was really looking for some sort of answer. I'm just, I'm just pointing that out.
In the old days, when there was a board, they used to have two meetings on that April, on that first.
I know, but I, I've.
Reorg meeting and then a regular meeting.
I know that, but I've had a discussion with Tammy and there is a long list of items. I'm not saying we can't get it on, but I don't know, because there are other things that I know are being put aside because of all the other items that are currently on there. That were carried over from previous meetings.
Lou, what is the fee to renew the permit?
This project is about six thousand dollars.
Yeah, I believe he paid sixty-three something, Joyce said, I asked.
All right, well, maybe he could work that out with the thruway if they have to front him some money to renew the permit until the village board can act on it.
Well, the permit's in effect for another four months, so that should hold it open until they can act on it.
You would hope.
Right, I think, and they think at that point, right, I think at that point, if for some reason the village board hasn't acted on it, Dan should be back and then we'll be able to look at other possible solutions.
Okay, I did send this to the village attorney a week ago.
But I understand.
To opine on it, but I, I don't know what to say.
Right, my only concern tonight is that I just would hate for this board to make, uh, you know, pass a resolution and extending something that they don't have the authority to do. And then every, and then both the applicant and the thruway act, assuming that they have the authority and then ultimately they don't. What we could do is put into the record that the planning board does support the extension of the building permit and the site plan approval.
Yeah, I think we all do. I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, I think we just make a recommendation to the village board that we're supportive, but, uh, we don't have the authority.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
That sounds like the way to go, to send it back to the village board and hopefully they'll, they'll act quickly. Realizing time is of the essence for the thruway and for the app, for the owner.
Yeah, and Suzanne, if you need assistance, like pulling that together along with the documents to send to the, the village board, I can assist you with that.
Okay, thank you. I would just give them the letters and, and the piece of the minutes requesting it to go.
Yeah, no, but I can put together a letter, like Eve and I, and, and I'll make sure Lou reviews it so that they're clear and they understand exactly what is needed.
Good idea.
Yeah, it all makes sense.
If they have the support from the three of you, I think that would make the case better.
And the planning board.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Um, we, we definitely have a meeting for April. We already have four applications. Um, if we have two eighty-two, if they get their response, we'll have the continuation of one thirty. We're going to have Chase come back and there is a new application that will be heard, um, that I send packets out for a proposed, um, cemetery.
Okay. As far as, uh, new business, does everyone know that the village of Vermont was ordered to cease enforcement of zoning code that discriminate against Orthodox Jewish residents and to restore the right to home worship? Issued on Southern District of New York.
Yeah, don't stop me on that one.
Though any, uh, residential place of worship, fourteen hundred square feet or less in size are to be reviewed and approved in an expedited basis without public hearing. Who reviews them? Is that you, Lou?
Well.
Fortunately, it appears so.
Yeah, and that's one of the things I'm waiting to get direction from Dan and the, um, attorneys, the two attorneys that were involved in this. And I haven't gotten anything yet to disseminate.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure the board members were aware.
Okay.
And also, as Suzanne mentioned, there will be some new village board members and there may be some shuffling of the boards. If you are here next month, great. If not, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Yes.
You don't know what's going to happen.
Suzanne, what is, what is the current, um, I guess, where do we sit from a tenure perspective? I'm not even quite sure, like.
Oh, um, uh, I believe Joe, you're up this year. Russell, I think you have, I have to pull it out. I don't have it in front of me. I think you have another year or two. Um, then we had, the ad hocks are supposed to be re, uh, either appointed or reappointed every year, but nothing was done last year because of the pandemic. So we had holdovers and I believe William Phillip was also up. One was, I think he was up last year, but was a holdover. And then, um, so the ad hocks would either have to be reappointed or they would put new people in. And then that you would, they would either have to reappoint the ones that are up. It's usually a four-year term unless you're replacing someone who had left.
She got a five-year term, yeah.
Five-year.
Right, and, um, there might be another opening after that.
And I think the chair has been reappointed as well.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, and the chair, the chairperson's always done yearly. You are correct.
And, and where do we stand then on the training?
Well, the training i- is yearly. You need your four hours and you need to do your recertification every two years. I always send that out. I have a list from, that I've been sending all of you where you're at. I, I, I haven't actually asked for a recent update. I have as of December, which I sent all of you. Because I'm waiting to see who the new, if there are new board members.
Okay.
And then I would add that, uh, and send them out. I, I did, you just did the recertification.
Yeah, but I think, I don't know if I need additional hours. I'm not, I'm not clear.
Well, that's two hours for that, so you'll need two more hours, most likely.
There are some.
Confirm with Arlene Miller and then I send you all the list. And the last list I sent was December. I will send a new one, but I need to see who the new board members are and explain to them what's required of them.
Okay.
The Westchester Municipal Planning Federation is having a few webinars coming up over the next month. And they're hour long, so you can get certificates from there.
Okay.
I mean, I would venture a guess that people would just be held over in this temporarily.
I, I, I have no idea. I have no idea. And I, I, I'm, I just do what I'm told. I have no idea.
Okay, anything else? I think Passover is coming. If you celebrate, enjoy.
Yes, enjoy. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Bye Suzanne.
Bye. Have a good night, everybody.
Yeah.
Take care.
Yep.